Going.
Yeah, there's no way I can do it. When all these meetings start coming up, I get behind.
And then, oh, you want to start the webinar also? It's so. We're gonna start bringing in the public. But if you go back to, oh, it is live stream because it's nice. And if you just want to start that recording and we're good to go.
All right, we'll be starting the recording here in just a second. Excellent. Well, thank you all for being a part of the Thursday, August 25th COBAC meeting. It's a hybrid meeting, our first one, and it's been great to actually meet some people in person for the first time in over two years. So excited about that. And I just want to call the meeting to order here. This is the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee. We'll call the meeting to order at 1:05 PM on Thursday, August 25th, 2022. Next on our agenda will be the land acknowledgement. And so I'll turn it over to Sharisa.
Thank you, Nick. So the city of Bend land acknowledgement reads as follows. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855, while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Llama, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this land, this area, excuse me, in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the Great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharisa. In the agenda here, it doesn't say for the roll call, but I'll go ahead and add that in here. Just as far as COBAC members present. Nicholas Raden, he, him, his, and I'm the Chair of COBAC and Architect in the Community. I'll turn it over to John.
My name is John Healan, Vice Chair for COBAC, and I'm a small business owner in town.
On the screen, we'll start with Ashley.
Hi, Ashley Schaefer, she/her. I'm the owner of Empowering Access.
Then Carl.
Carl Burnett, he/him. And resident with a disability and a recreation enthusiast.
Thank you. And we'll turn it over to Whitney.
Whitney Bennett, she/her/hers, Education Program Manager at Commute Options.
Then we've got Cory also. Welcome Cory.
Hi, I'm Cory Sparks, she/her. I work for Central Oregon Land Watch and also disabled community member.
Then is there, is Amanda present as well? No, Amanda's not present. Okay. Amanda Hamer is not present today. What about Jenny?
Jenny is not able to make it today either, Nick.
She's not able to make it. And then Erin, is Erin on the?
I don't see, no.
Okay. All right. So with that, we've got a quorum. And so we'll go ahead and move forward. So we've got the minutes, approval of the minutes from our June 23 COBAC meeting. And for all those who have read it and gone through, would anybody like to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Or to, or otherwise have a discussion on those minutes?
Um, this is Cory. I moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of approving June 23 minutes? I, I, all opposed? Extentions? All right, our minutes have passed from our June COBAC meeting. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, our public comment period. And so Lisa, do we have any members of the public?
We are new members.
Not on the Zoom. And is anybody within the audience here, any comments? Okay. All right, if there's any comments that come up, we do have a little bit of time at the end during our roundtable that we can, if anyone does show up and wants to make any comments. All right. Moving forward, we've got our COBAC business. And so we'll just go through a quick update. I'll turn it over to Lisa to discuss the logistics of the stipend program.
I have two signed up right now. We're waiting for people to actually email their forms in. You, we, whether you're going to opt out or not, we need the form signed and mailed in, or you can actually bring it into the office. I do have the debit cards. As soon as you sign in, they can be handed back out to you. And I think that's about it.
For virtual members, they'll be mailed after. I'm sorry. For virtual members participating, they can be mailed. We'll mail them after the meeting.
Okay, yes, for virtual, for virtual member. Well, we haven't received their mail.
And even if they sign a form, say a week from now, they'll still receive a Skype request basically.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Can you repeat that? Because now I can hear you.
Oh, people attending virtually, if they submit their paperwork, or they have to submit paperwork, whether they opt in or out, they will be mailed their debit card after the meeting. Did everybody hear that? Great.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions on the stipend program at this time? We've, Councilmember Barb Campbell, welcome. All right. So coming up here in October, it'll be my last meeting as the Chair of COBAC. And so we'll need to talk about the transition at that point. Having elections in October for a Chair and Vice Chair position. And so just wanted to open the floor to the group, just for any discussion on that item, or if at this point, it's just informational only.
That went by quick. I feel like you just became Chair.
Yeah, I did. I guess it's been a year. So since I took over Chair responsibilities from Peter before, so.
Yeah, it's a max year term. And then you have to what, quit for a year and then come back for another year?
Sure.
Encourage anyone who's interested to run. I'm automatically nominated because I'm Vice Chair, but I, I would also love to see someone else take the position.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a great, a year of, over the last, I guess I was interim Chair for a couple of months there last summer, but it's been great. There's been some great changes that have taken place. And as Chair, I was able to participate in some really interesting recruitment options. Part of, as part of Anna's review panel, as well as Sharisa's, and that was really cool to be a part of and to. So I encourage anyone who wants to do it, lots of exciting options and opportunities. Anything else on the election coming up in the fall? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the, any outstanding COBAC membership business items that anybody wants to discuss at this time? All right. Excellent. Then we'll move on to item number six. And at this point, Ashley, I'll turn it over to you. And it's to talk about the bridge near Columbia Park.
Yes, let me get my little slides up there. All right, can y'all see it full screen mode?
Yes.
Our, our view didn't change to full screen mode, but that's okay.
Weird.
Big enough.
It's annoying. I don't want it on full screen. I'm done. Um, okay, well then. I'm working on a little laptop today, so bear with me. Um, so background, I'm working with ESA Environmental Science Associates, who got the contract with Ben Park and Rec to do some water access projects along the Deschutes in the middle of town. They're looking at the three parks that go through there, Miller's, Columbia, and McKay. And while, while looking at these parks, we, you know, we've identified like some good access stuff that can happen at Miller's and McKay, since they already have some stuff going on. But we've been looking at Columbia Park and kind of trying to figure out what, what the best type of access would be to it. I don't know if any of you have been to it, but it's got some pretty steep hills if you come from the Columbia Park side to get to it. And then the other side is the bridge that connects to Riverfront that, that goes to Miller's Landing. And so we're, we're having some issues with our decision on this because the bridge isn't very accessible. And so that's why I wanted to come to COBAC and kind of just show everyone what we're working on and see if there's any interest in trying to get the city involved more. And, you know, it's, it could be a cool park for, for access. But whether or not it's worth it for the city to invest in some improvements on the bridge is, is something that I wanted y'all's opinions. And, you know, to see if it would be worth it for us to, to push the city towards that. So I wanted to give some background on, on the project. And this image, which is a Google map of, of Columbia Park aerial view, showing how it connects to the bridge and Riverfront Street. I don't know if anyone has been there, but the, the alleyway. Well, okay, so the bridge, just to, to give you some information on that, this is what it looks like. This is a picture of me sitting on the bridge, trying to view the river, and it has very large wood beams that are the railing, and you absolutely can't see anything. You would have to like crouch all the way down or somehow try to lift up to be able to see the water. And so it's really like not anything enjoyable for a wheelchair user. It's also like wood planks for the, you know, for the actual bridge, which have, you can't really see in this image, but they're, they're not very smooth anymore. For a wheelchair user, the front little wheels, it's kind of like you have to do a wheelie across it. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty bumpy and doesn't feel the safest. But the, the main part of this project that we're really concerned with is this image, which is the transition from Riverfront Street and the alleyway back there. It's really, there's a cement pad that's poured to connect to the wood bridge, and then, you know, the path is gravel. And it's, it doesn't do it justice in this photo, but it's, it's quite a lip. I had to like pull myself up using the railing or get someone to help me in my wheelchair. And so it's really not an easy bridge to go over for some mobility devices. And so, you know, Ian with Ben Park and Rec had a conversation with, I think, some engineers at the city. And they, they didn't seem interested in doing some work on the bridge, didn't feel like it was feasible, as far as I know. But recently, there's a house right next to the alleyway that just went in and a part of, you know, code is that, you know, when there's new construction over a certain amount, they need to pave the, you know, stuff in front of their house to have a sidewalk and everything. And so they did a big paving of the entire alleyway, actually. But then they stop right here on this image, which goes right up to the, you know, the railing that starts for the path to the bridge. And it's, you know, maybe like 30 feet, it's hard to judge from this, to the little, little transition onto the bridge that's just gravel and pretty uneven. And so we were hoping that we could get support and get the city to, to find a way to pave that. You know, we wish we, they would have liked, you know, had those people just paved the rest of it. Doesn't seem like it would have been much more expensive to do it within that project, but that's past. Some other concerns with the bridge are bridge jumping. That's another thing with this project is that we want to discourage people from that. And currently, the, the area that people get out of the water is, is near the bridge. And so that kind of encourages them when they have access to get in and out of the water. And so we're hoping to move that downstream further. And, you know, and change the bridge railing a little bit. There's, there's a lot of different ways to do it that, that would help a lot more with that. There's been a lot of injuries with bridge jumping. And so I think all in all, it would be great to, to do some updates to it that hopefully wouldn't be, you know, over the top expensive, but would make it more accessible and would be a little safer for people. And so this last photo is just the alleyway showing how much paving took place with, with the new house that went in. And that looks great and smooth and easy. But we, we would really like to see that be extended, that, that rest of that 30 feet. Because we'd like to make this park a little more of kind of the locals hangout. I think, you know, looking at Miller's and McKay, they're pretty tourist heavy. And we want to have a space that's, you know, a little calmer, that, you know, people can hang out by the water and have access there. And so we feel like this, this could be an important part, and a lot of the community and the neighborhoods have expressed like how, how important this park is to them. And so we want to make sure we're making it as accessible as possible. We feel like this is a big access point, especially since the other side is, is steep hills. And so, so yeah, I'm, I'm just curious if COBAC has an interest in pushing for this. Any questions?
Um, hi, this is Cory. I think so. I mean, based on its location, I'm sure it would get plenty of use. I don't think it would be a project where it would, you know, there's wouldn't be any use. But I wonder also, since it's near a park, if the Parks District could potentially work with the city to help pay for some of that. And yeah, it's inaccessible in general. It's not a very nice bridge to, to walk on even because of all of the wood and, and like that, you know, the cracks in the concrete and everything leading up to there. So I mean, I think it would be a worthy project for sure.
Definitely. And I, you know, I think Ben Park and Rec is interested in assisting in it. But also just trying to, to find ways to do it that isn't overly expensive. I think they're pretty open.
Ashley, would, do you have a preference on what the railing might look like? Is it kind of like the railing at, at the bridge on Mirror Pond, like just vertical slats?
Um, I think they're, they're aiming for something more like the bridge that goes over the Whitewater Park. So it's like that thin wire. Apparently, that's been something that, um, you know, has been a good deterrent in a lot of places because it's hard for people to climb on that. And it also provides a, you know, a pretty unobstructed view. And so I think that's what they're aiming for. I know they had some ideas on, on potential options, but just something not so heavy and big.
I'm definitely interested in helping fight for some changes there because I've experienced all of the struggles that you mentioned as well. Glad to hear you bring it up. Although I think whatever design they come up with, kids will find a way to jump off it.
All right.
Actually, this is Sharisa. I'm not sure if you can see this online, but Barb has her hand up.
Oh, hey Barb.
Hi, Ashley. Thank you so much. This is just so embarrassing that I have questions for you instead of having answers for you. But I have questions for you. And Ashley, do you know, does the city of Bend own that particular bridge? Yeah, interesting. We also, oh, and I just learned this a few years ago, we own the one in Mirror Pond, the pedestrian bridge. And that one is slated to be rebuilt. The surface on that one is probably just the same. I think they were built about the same time. That wooden deck that's become so uneven. And I think that one, we actually would like to see it be wider. So I bring this up because number one, wow, Ashley, I had no idea about this handrail. Just looking at it, I think it looks like that weird piece on the top was an add-on. I'm guessing they did that to try and keep people from jumping off. I'm thinking that strange addition, they thought maybe that would mean kids are not standing up. You know what I mean? So, um, so I, so I guess what I want to say is, wow, we should make sure, since both of these bridges are in play, we need to make sure that neither of them ends up with this horrible handrail again. And, you know, in, usually I try and simplify things, but maybe in this case, we almost want to make it more complicated by talking about both of them at the same time. You know, we should be considering both of these. We should, the design, we shouldn't spend time designing one only to just go through that same thing again. You know what I mean? And so I think we want to find out about if there's any relation to them funding. So that's what I wanted to say about that. And then as far as the asphalt goes, I don't want to make you any promises, but if I cannot get David Abis out there to put that little tiny bit of asphalt to cover that, you know, I think I will just go away in despair, Ashley. So, you know, I want to say to you, okay, I'm writing an email this very moment. Will you, um, do I, can I send your pictures, please, to David, just to show him, oh my gosh, David? We just need somebody to come out there with a shovel and some asphalt. Because it seems like, you know, that we can do almost with nothing. And then the larger rebuild of the bridge is a much bigger, more complicated thing. But thank you so much. I really, I had no idea about the, being able to see from these bridges. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Counselor Campbell, this, this is Ryan.
Ryan!
Director of the Engineering Department. So just to let you know, when we were doing our ride the other day, the key routes work, we stopped at that spot and Janet, who works for David Abis, made note of the needed improvements there. So they're aware of it. I don't think it'd be a surprise if it's mentioned to David. I'm not sure who Parks talked to. There was a comment earlier, they talked to engineering in the city. I'm not sure who that was, but I think the city would definitely be interested in doing what we could to help out on that.
Okay. I was thinking, I could talk to our city manager and see if he's going to be doing any surprise paving.
Right.
We had a hilarious meeting. Someone was upset that there had been surprise paving on Galveston. And the business on Galveston, they didn't know it was going to happen, and we ended up out there, and it was noisy and smelly. And then it was so funny, just a couple of days later, we hear from the city manager that it was literally him driving the truck that he had gone out with the department that day, and they were letting, I was laughing so hard that the idea that our city manager is going out and doing surprise paving in the evenings in our city, you know? So I'll see if I can get Eric to do some surprise paving over there.
Oh, that would be awesome. Yeah. And I don't know who Ian talked to with the city. I don't, I don't know if Sharisa, if you ended up having a conversation with him and finding out more detail on that, but I, I don't know the details.
Okay. So that, we'll see if we can just, that can be just separate. But, you know, that asphalt, that problem honestly looks to me like an almost no money. We, we can do that. And then the bigger question of the bridge and the redesign, well, obviously, that's far more complicated.
And would that be the city of Bend or the Parks and Rec who takes that? Who's the lead on that?
I'm afraid it's us, Ryan. Isn't that right? If we own it, probably.
That's something we would have to do. So I know there's, we're going after some funding opportunities for the Drake Bridge. Considering pulling this one into the equation.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to have that conversation with David and Janet.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be great if you guys come back once there's some designs on that to be able to, for COBAC to review it and stuff too, which I think is great. And then I do think, Ashley, I think as a COBAC, I, I think we can make this as a letter recommending to, I guess it would be to Eric, right, Sharisa, that we would make this recommendation and not City Council?
I'm correct. COBAC is a city managers committee, so it would go to Eric. And if I can add a comment, one of the, the values of having Ashley here today in the strategic plan discussion coming up later on is as you're trying to prioritize projects that COBAC will be working on over the coming year, this may be something to consider. That said, a letter of recommendation is, is not a really large project. So I guess, you know, Nick, to answer your question, it depends on how COBAC wants to move this project forward in the context of, you know, maybe something larger in the strategic plan.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm all in support of that, Ashley. And we'll, I guess we can coordinate on the specifics of that here in a little bit.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward, we'll talk about, on our agenda, we've got the Midtown Crossings presentation with Ryan, Garrett, and Allison.
Hi, I'm Garrett Sabre, in the Engineering Department, work for Ryan, who just mentioned is the Director. And then Ally, if you want to.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Platt, and I oversee our new core area, Tax and Commit Finance area. It's a little redundant core area, area. But so I, I work within our Community and Economic Development Department here at the city.
I probably should have mentioned my role more. I'm, I'm the GeoBond or Transportation Bond Principal in the Engineering Department, responsible for oversight of the implementation of our recently voted, voter-approved bond, transportation bond.
Okay.
Which a portion of that goes to this, or a portion of the overall funding from the bond goes towards the Midtown projects. I recently was assigned as the Project Manager here. Rory Rowan was before, I think, to your number of times. He took another opportunity outside the city and left this one. These two are here with all the answers. So we, we have a lot of slides here. I assume we are kind of limited on, limited on time. So I'm going to try to go through them relatively quickly, and then we can pause or go back to slides as this group sees fit or as you see fit.
Perfect. Yeah, we've got about 20 minutes allocated.
Okay, yeah. Maybe high level, just start with, and I'll go over to the schedule here. You know, we're looking at this as kind of a three-phase project. We're looking at three crossings is what Midtown is, which is to the north being Greenwood, to the center being Hawthorne, and to the south end being Franklin. So improvements to the two existing under crossings, and then the addition of an over crossing at Hawthorne for bikes and pets, with most of this being pretty heavily bike and pet focused. I point out that we're in a feasibility study right now because we've started public outreach. We're kind of midstream in that. And our next phase of work with wherever this funding gets prioritized would be going to a design phase. And that would be another continuation of public outreach and coordination with groups such as yours to help us figure out what our final concept is going to be. So from a feasibility perspective, we're trying to figure out what is possible, you know, doesn't have major fatal flaws and roughly what those costs are to help us prioritize funding. So through this, through this initial alternative development, we came up with two different concepts at Greenwood, three at Hawthorne, and two at Franklin. Those were what was presented at the Public Outreach Open House and Online, you know, from late June to early July. And there were several other events Ally participated in as well, reaching out to some of the Latino community, as well as some online and in-person outreach. So we'll go into each of these a little bit more. Do you have anything else to add that you were more involved in it than me? I wasn't around.
No, I mean, I, I think some of the feedback that we. No, I mean, I, I think some of the feedback that we heard specifically around some of the Hawthorne Avenue under or over crossing, I should say over crossing, sorry. Specifically around Hawthorne Avenue was wanting to do more tailored outreach to kind of our accessibility community and folks that can represent that lens of how they would view these design concepts at the different locations. And so I wanted to kind of do a specific outreach today with COBAC to kind of get some input into these concepts before, you know, council weighs in on, on our final recommendation for where to prioritize funding.
Okay. Some of these concepts and then our, our final slide of the email schedule. So I'll try to go through these pretty high level and once again, we can come back to them. Keeping in mind that there's feedback that we've got during the public outreach portion that we want to make sure that we carry forward into the design phase and continue to address and collect or solicit feedback for. So concept one, is this in the way? Does Carl have a question? To have seen this hand up for a little while?
I just wanted to ask the two speakers on the left and right sides of the table to project their voices a little bit more. It's a little bit difficult to hear online.
Okay. Sorry about that. We had microphones in front of us, but maybe those don't work. So we'll lean towards the center. Is that better, Carl?
Yeah, thanks.
Cool. So this first one is concept one for Greenwood. It looks at leaving, you know, the Parkway Bridge largely in place. There's no modifications to that structure. It's more about what the elevation and widths are going to be for the approaches. So where bikers and pets are going to be and what the travel, the cross section is going to be for the travel lane. So it's three lanes coming up to the under crossing and then going down to two underneath. And you have your pets and bikes down at that lower street level, which we did get a lot of comments about and with consideration of the fact that it's a roll curb right now, closer to, you know, that street level elevation, people wanted to see a little bit more vertical separation. That's one comment that we would bet more moving forward, which is on a future slide too. So I should probably not get too in the weeds, but I'm an engineer. Concept two differs a little bit where there's the separation between your bike and your ped. So you have your bike down at your elevation of, of vehicular lane. And then you have a separated raised area for, for pets with that shared use path width. This is as Ally mentioned a little bit about some of the areas where we've heard some feedback and seeking additional feedback, just to help us understand some of the comments that were received during public outreach. As we get farther into this, I think it says here, does that, you know, the, the preferred alternative that we saw for Hawthorne in particular, which is the concepts we'll get into in these next slides, had suggested that alternative one, which is the straight approach. So they're all an over crossing, but different types of approaches or different ways of getting to the over crossing. The first one being a straight approach was, was steeper up at seven and a half percent with rest, intermittent resting points leading up to the over crossing. And there were some concerns heard about that. Alternative two, which wasn't scored as high with, or didn't score as high with the input that we received from the community, has a four and a half percent slope and then had a switchback in it. Basically to help reduce that slope where it connects in. And then alternative three scored the lowest being the elevator and stair concept. One thing, just to, to caveat with all, all of this is that, or asterix is, is that we are at this at this feasibility level right now. And we don't have survey, we don't know exact elevations. We still do need to figure that out. But it is a pretty big consideration, I think, of alternative one versus alternative two. And that will be major differences in, in that slope. You know, we aren't going to go out and get a survey and be like, oh, we're magically below five percent. You know? So we can continue through the alternatives, just so people can get a good visual if they haven't had the opportunity. This is concept one, the straight approach on Hawthorne to the east and to the west. This is the one where we mentioned it's the seven and a half percent with the intermittent landings as you're going up. I'd also be interested in knowing some areas, maybe where people have navigated those two. Because that's one question that comes up a lot is where are some examples in, in town or around the city? Where we might have had to navigate something like that and it's to give people the visual of what it looks like. I, I think of Murphy Bridge down at Third Street comes to mind for me, but I think Ally had a good example too, and we can talk about. Alternative two or concept two is the switchback concept. This is the one where the ramp gets down to a little lower percentage. But once again, connecting roughly those same locations to the east and west being Second Street over to the east, Hill Street over to the west and then same bridge over crossing at the rail and at the, the state highway system, the Parkway. Then concept three, once again scored the lowest. This is the elevator and stair option. We got a good amount of feedback on this. I should say, as, as I'm going through this, if anyone is interested to the, all the public feedback, all the statistics associated with it, we have posted on the Midtown crossings website with the city of Bend. I can send that to this group or Lisa. It's on the agenda. Super. Thank you. You're ahead of it. Thank you. So you can go there and see the entire summary of, of feedback and statistics from the input that we received. I think 230 community members or so who provided feedback during the, during the period. Does that sound right?
I think it's on one of the next slides.
Probably.
Yeah, I went to the one that you guys had at the event center.
Okay.
That was great.
Yeah, that was, it was a good turnout for, for Capital Project. So Franklin Avenue, there's, as I said, there's two concepts here. This first one is, is largely focused on widening and improving the, the eastern side of the plaza or the under crossing area. And not, doesn't make any changes to the structure there. So you'd be maintaining the same kind of structure at the crossing. You know, we have a pretty narrow crossing in there. Just nothing, no changes there. So the next one is, is the bigger kind of replacement of everything that looks at widening your facilities, having a, an area for bikes and pets, shared use path area. Once again, showing that raised. We also, I guess I should mention for both Franklin Ave and Greenwood, we do have long-term goals here and, and Ryan has programmed in to the Stormwater CIP to also be looking at the drainage concerns here, which is probably on everyone's mind after the last few events we've seen.
Now, if I remember correctly, you guys said that you had enough in the budget for two of these projects and not all three. Like the, the idea of widening the Franklin underpass was like a monumental task, correct?
So we're, we're kind of midstream in this feasibility study right now. And if Rory said that before he left, then you know. So we, we don't have cost estimates yet, is the, long story short, we need to see those numbers. I've, we've, we've all heard input from the rail and ODA and team members. And there's a lot of suggestions out there. We have approximately $21 million budgeted right now between these three crossings. And that includes some funding that's specific for like Greenwood, some state funding. And so we need to just see that cost estimate and see what the opportunities might be and go to council and have that and see if there's other funding sources that we might be able or interested in pursuing, like grant opportunities or, or others. So there's not a good clear cut answer like that right now, I would say, unless someone feels differently. Okay. So concept two is the first, the full rebuild. I was on, on the phone with BNSF a couple of days ago and they said that one is extremely expensive in their mind. But they're also talking from that anecdotal level of how much rail they think you might have to replace. So those are things we just got to navigate. Public outreach, this is a summary of, of who and when. High level, online, open house, English language, one twenty-three, Spanish three, in person, eighty, English seventeen, Spanish speaking. Overall themes here, I wish I could move this, can we just close that? Yes. So overall theme was, you know, which crossing would people like to see worked on first or initially? The highest rating being forty percent for Hawthorne. Franklin relatively close behind that at thirty-two and Greenwood at twenty-eight. And then we go down through each of the concepts. So just looking at those respectively, instead of as a whole, where would you want to put your money? Greenwood concept two was eighty-one percent, so it was a pretty large majority. Hawthorne Avenue being sixty-five percent for that concept one, as you mentioned, that's kind of that, that's steeper seven and a half percent straight approach. And then I had a note in here about that ramp slope being further evaluated. We need survey. Franklin Ave then concept two, which is that full, full rebuild of both bridges for the highway and, and the rail eighty-one percent. Lot of comments, as noted here, about flooding and snow at that under crossing. And then down to kind of these general comments here, these are just some common themes that we saw. Lot of people had understanding, a lot of people who attended had a, a good understanding of the project and the bond. People wanted to see more info, you know, we were at this midstream point in the feasibility study, don't have everything. And everybody wants that to go along with, I think, helping them with their considerations and their input, which is really nice and thoughtful, I think. And then, as you can see with the next two, there's kind of a split there. It's like some want to fix as much as they can now and some want to go to the really big project and get something iconic sooner or put all the money towards that. I'm going to skip over a lot of this stuff, but you can see this follows those themes about concept two for Greenwood, concept one for Hawthorne, concept two for Franklin. And then this is the summary of the, all the responses. So it's just back up to those other slides. I mentioned when we were talking about Greenwood, some of the modifications that we're going to carry forward. So you're aware to, that we, that we heard pretty loud and clear. And we feel as though there are things that we should consider with design as we move over to going to the actual design phase. So at Greenwood, both concepts, this all relates really to what our EMS emergency services requirements are about width of roadway. So we did a lot of those roll curb, curb concepts or bike down at street levels that we could have that twenty foot width for emergency service response. So it doesn't get congested or cars are stopped and they can't get through. So it's just a coordination item for us to figure out what's going to be an acceptable solution. Hawthorne Avenue, eliminate the bridge support at US ninety-seven in the railroad. So in between the two, which we've heard a good amount from both agencies that that is something that they are struggling with seeing as being a feasible option. So we're just showing that removed from that perspective of wanting to help facilitate that future coordination. Eliminate parking on the north side of Hawthorne, we're going to show that. Just basically when you're, you're exiting on the north side of the road to the west side of, the west side of the Parkway. And then a limb, what are we, concept two, switchback ramps, provide rounded corners. That one was easy to incorporate. And then the straight approach, reducing approach to slope, reducing approach slope, which is one that we need to carry forward and continue to consider and continue, and continue to present the community and to, to this group once again, once we get to that phase. Franklin Avenue, both concepts, widen walkway at the western plaza area. So people want to see some improvements over there as you get towards the city side. In concept two, the full rebuild, people would like to see the, raise the shared use path to vertically separate from travel lanes, which we're showing right now. But once again, that's another EMS conversation that we need to have. Is that, if that was a design option that we were moving forward with. Sorry, I'm probably not being loud enough. Sorry, thank you for your reminder. Evaluation criteria, so our next steps, as we mentioned, is we're, we got evaluation criteria developed and we're using that to help identify recommendations for each of the three crossings as well as an overall recommendation with consideration of all the funding that is available. So we have a few next steps associated with that right now. We're kind of going to, to TBOC, the Transportation Oversight Committee and Ally's group, the Core Area Advisory Board, and presenting to them just on an update of what we have for public feedback, what our next steps are. And then trying to get this additional cost information and recommendation information to bring to them because they make decisions on, on funding. We're coming to, to your group today to collect additional feedback and input on things that you may want to make sure on the forefront of our mind, whether it's now or to carry forward. And then ultimately, we need to take information and some of these groups, especially TBOC, can provide recommendations to council, which we need to go and speak to them in mid October to talk about all the results of the study, talk about funding opportunities and try to get some direction on how we move forward. That's kind of the high level schedule that we have moving forward. Hopefully I didn't talk too long, but.
That was great. I mean, I know from attending the, the open house that you guys had, I, I of course prefer the straight shot Hawthorne Bridge, but that is a seven and a half percent is pretty. I can't imagine going over that. But I guess I have a question about your second concept with the, with the cutouts on the side for people. Is it possible to have them on each side? Because I know on a bike, for instance, you hit those corners and if there's someone coming the other way, it's going to be kind of a mess.
You're talking about this concept here.
Right.
So if you're coming down on a bike and you're trying to go around the corners.
How wide is this?
They have not put a width on it yet.
Okay.
It's a detail that we're working through still. We have talked about that, how we would have a dedicated bike versus dedicated pedestrian path, especially locations like that. That's one of those details we're working, working through right now with the estimating too.
Okay.
Arian has a question.
Yeah, I just was curious in general through the different plans, like what's the best method to segregate bikers from pedestrians? I kind of feel like by my own personal experience of having people come up on a slow walker or that's just like the biggest kind of conflict point. Are there any designs like have, is it just signage that says, you know, bikes here, walkers here? Or is there a, a gold standard on how that's done? Or is it shown to be effective?
We need Robin Lewis here. I had, I had a conversation between, I think, Robbie, Robin and Ally not too long ago about what would be our best concept. We're not at that level of design with this yet or, or consideration, but there is definitely some sort of push for whether or not we do vertical separation in between the two and have assigned, assigned sections on one side for pets and one side for bikes. There's definitely a push for that, but we haven't, haven't got to that point of jumping that hurdle yet and figuring out, you know, where we fall with safety and requirements and people following the different assignments. So, you know, whether you do striping, signing or vertical barriers, I think is still up for discussion to figure out as we get into the design phase.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, I want to talk from an accessibility perspective about this concept that we're looking at right now. I also support concept one, the straight, straight approach. This one would be better if I was in my wheelchair because the slope is less. But it would be a night and cycle because my turning radius is really not that good. And going, I don't even know if I'd be able to make it around those switchbacks. It depends on how tight they are. So that's something I hope is considered really strongly is access for all types of vehicles, not just what you might think about at first, like wheelchairs. And I had that same concern about the third concept for the Hawthorne Bridge, which is the elevators. I've never attempted to use a, an elevator in my hand cycle before. I can't dismount to get in an elevator like a regular cyclist can. And I guess it would be possible to design a really big elevator that have, has buttons that are low enough that I can reach them and that has a door on one side that I roll in through and a nor. and that has a door on one side that I roll in through and a nor- a door on the other side that I roll out through. But uh, man, I hope that if we were to go with an option like that, that somebody would consider that.
So Carl, is it um, it sounds like you're open on just from accessibility perspective to uh Concept One or Two, but you might might um lean towards Concept Two a bit more if there was a little bit more consideration for uh smoothing out those switchbacks or doing a larger radius on those switchbacks. Is that accurate?
Um, yeah, I, well, my preference might still be for one because if I'm um I I would see myself biking across this bridge more than I would see myself um pushing across in my wheelchair. And so selfishly, I'd like to have the straight shot. And you know, when you're on a bike, you go up and down hills all the time. So seven and a half percent is not a big, big deal. Um, I suppose it comes down to whether we think about this more as a biking bridge or a walking bridge. Um, of course, that has to be both. So um we have to make some sacrifices one way or the other. I could live, I feel like I could live with Concept Two if I thought that I would be able to negotiate the ramps on my hand cycle, but um it's hard for me to imagine a design that would um let me do that unless it was not switchbacks at all, but rather like big gentle curves or something.
Yeah, that's great. And thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, uh, yeah, Ashley, yep.
Um, yeah, I I think I have somewhat of a similar view as Carl. Um but I'm also thinking about like that seven percent in the winter time, um when it might be slippery. That makes it a lot harder on a wheelchair. Um, I'm also a wheelchair hand cycle user. Um, uh, you know, we definitely use our bikes a lot in Bend. That's what you do. But for anyone who does have a wheelchair, seven percent in the the snow would be hard. That's, that's, you know, dreaming that the the paths were actually plowed, which isn't often on a lot of places. So I don't know that it would be accessible anyways, but if, you know, magically it were, it would still be pretty slippery in the winter. Um, and maybe a little difficult at seven percent, but I do like the idea of it just being a straight shot. Um, I'm also uh curious about the the two-way bike path and some of the accessibility issues that come along with that when you're thinking about blind or low vision users. Um, you know, if you're just relying on signage, that's really not that safe. Um, for someone who may have a cane or a dog, um, you you know, and so I would advise there being something more substantial that that separates the bikes and uh the pedestrians. Um, you know, thinking about rumble strips or any kind of bump, something that that indicates transition or going into the line of of bikers. I think that's it.
Yeah, I would imagine with it also being elevated and exposed to more wind that ice is gonna be a big problem there. And even as a pedestrian, I'd have issues. I mean, in the winter, unless you have yak tracks on, you're not gonna go on that.
Yeah. I'm also not excited about the elevator, but Carl had a good point if it's like a two-way one.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, from the open house, uh when they meant, when you guys mentioned the elevator idea, it was like, this is a nightmare. It's gonna be continuing cost and maintenance. Elevators break all the time and they collect garbage and everything. So it seemed like you guys weren't too thrilled about that option to begin with.
Doesn't, it it doesn't feel like something that's gonna gain a lot of traction based on what we've heard so far, but we have to go through the next steps. Um, definitely fully committed.
Especially if it's the only option, right? Like, it would be one thing if we added, if if elevators were added to Concept One or Two as an alternative way to access the middle of the bridge from First Street or something like that. Um, but to have that be the only way, yeah, anybody who's a wheelchair user will tell you that um when an elevator is the only way to access something and um the elevator is out of shape or out of service, it's not fun.
I'm reminded of those uh that street in Norway where they actually have a little bike escalator. It's just like little hooks, almost like you're going through a car wash. You just hook your front tire to it and it pulls you right up the hill.
Yeah, my my thought too was just like if if it it's a walking only bridge, whereas there is no bikes, you know, you have to walk your bike through it, but that's really difficult to enforce, but that that's a possibility.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I guess there's a lot of details. Um, it's it's interesting because we just started having some of those a couple of weeks ago. Um, about how we would do that and this this input really helps, I think, with consideration as we move forward. If this is the concept that ends up or the project out of the the three locations that ends up getting the priority focus. So appreciate the input. Um, definitely valuable and good thing for us to continue to have on the forefront of our minds.
I just want to point out that any area where it's indicated that you have to walk your bike is is automatically inaccessible to hand cyclists.
Okay. That's a good point, too.
Hmm, I guess we just, it would benefit from being wide enough to maybe have half of it be going incoming bike traffic and the other half being pedestrian or, you know, maybe the middle is just back and forth and having some sort of soft barrier in between the two.
Yeah.
Were were there other or is there other kind of design feedback on the existing under crossing concepts? So on Greenwood or Franklin, I know we kind of focused a lot on Hawthorne, which was very helpful, but on the other concepts, I'm wondering if there's questions.
This is Corey. I don't know if that is um if this quite counts as that, but as far as um considering for prioritization, which of which bridge uh to work on or which crossing to work on? Um, what will be at the other end of the, you know, street where it drops off? Um, I mean, it looks like Greenwood just kind of ends at First Street. Um, and so I'm not super familiar with what that looks like, but if it is, you know, just kind of a difficult area it for accessibility in general, um kind of like what Ashley's presentation earlier where, you know, there's these improvements can be made, um but then there's just a bunch of gravel, you know, whether or not for prioritization sake. Um, if the where it ends off is going to be accessible as well.
I can kind of answer that question a little bit, Corey. I think the feat, for the purpose of this feasibility study, the narrow focus for for at least this consultant team and the project team looking at at these three locations is really on the actual crossing itself. But we as city staff and council recognize that these aren't just, we wouldn't just build a crossing without improvements to get to that improved crossing. And so we do really see especially Franklin and Greenwood being a whole corridor approach. Um, the both the Greenwood Avenue concepts do require Greenwood Avenue to be reconfigured to at least a three-lane section approach approaching um the roadway. And we have done a corridor avenue um alternatives analysis at the whole corridor between Wall to Third Street to look at what improvements could be made along that corridor to um enhance safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. Where would crossing locations be or safe crossings be located? And we just completed a similar study on Franklin Avenue and these these are really not intended to be like a final design for those corridors, but really just to get a high-level sense of what the alternatives could be and cost estimates so that we can bring that information to council when they make a decision about these um crossing opportunities. Cause I agree with you, right? Build build a crossing that that nobody can get to or nobody um can actually use, isn't the goal.
I mean, for emergency vehicles, I'm imagining you could put up a physical sort of barrier that adds as a deterrent for normal cars, but emergency trucks can clear it probably, right?
It's the conversation to have, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, right now, I think they require twenty-foot width, clear width. Sometimes go down to eighteen, I mean, some exceptions there, but ultimately they need to make sure they can get around a vehicle. If there's a vehicle that has stalled or broke down there while they're on an emergency response, so.
And the idea is you need to have the pedestrian and bike area wide enough so that if they need to go around a car that's stopped, they can go through there.
That's gonna be our path, yeah. So we we designed that for that scenario then, you know, it's thicker reinforced concrete. It's uh got something that they can drive over, it's mountable. Um, maybe some, you know, plastic pilings that flex, you know, those are some of the details to work through for sure.
Okay.
And from a traffic perspective, like the east-west uh traffic uh, you know, going from the four lanes now down to essentially two at that bridge, is there have you guys done traffic studies yet on that? Wasn't involved.
There, there was a traffic study that was completed as part of that corridor analysis. It didn't look at like twenty-fifty conditions by any means, but it did look at conditions today. Um, if we were to make that change, it does, it does have impacts to travel time reliability along the corridor. I can't speak to the details. Cause I didn't, I didn't manage that effort. I'd wanna call DKS, the consultant that worked on that traffic study um to relay that information.
Carl has a question?
Yeah, um I'm definitely a big proponent of separate infrastructure for bikes and pedestrians. So that's why I'm definitely a big supporter of um the Hawthorne Crossing. And I realized that one thing I haven't heard any discussion of is how that crossing might relate to the Neighborhood Greenway program um route that has been proposed, I think, and is still on the table as far as I know, um to be built kind of from that point on Hawthorne um through Juniper Park and and then connecting um ultimately with the uh Twelfth Street pedestrian crossing over over Greenwood. Um, so I'm just wondering if anybody has thought about how the Hawthorne Crossing um fits into that bigger picture.
Hey Carl, this is Ryan. Yeah, that's a great point. We, as you called it out, there's been three previous phases of the Greenway works that have been built already. We've held on Phase Four intentionally to kind of see how this plays out. Um, but regardless, yeah, the Phase Four, the Greenways work is gonna be vital to making that connections to the bridge. Um, and even to Franklin and Greenwood as well. So um, once we kind of get this prioritization effort from council, we'll adjust the Greenways if needed um to make sure that we tie into that. But yeah, we want to make sure we're getting people safely, you know, from Juniper, like you said, all the way to and through any of these crossings safely into downtown.
Yeah, okay, great.
I'll I'll add to that the landing on the east side of the crossing, well, technically the landing on both sides falls within our new core area, Urban Renewal District for all of these crossings. Um, but Hawthorne in particular is sort of seen as kind of the center of what we hope to be a new emerging um extension of downtown in the Bend Central District. And so um I oversee a funding source that is specifically um targeted to increase kind of redevelopment potential of that area. And so that east side landing, while there's not a lot um drawing folks to that area today, other than Oregon Spirit Distillers and the Bottle Drop, um is intended to be a new mixed-use area uh with housing. Uh, we are actively looking at locating City Hall on that side of the parkway as well. Um, and putting a new city hall. So that area is in really envisioned to change and we do have funding to kind of help realize that vision. And there have been discussions about Hawthorne being a plaza or a festival street. Um, so I I definitely think uh if we get direction for Hawthorne to be the priority location, there will be a lot more conversations about what the landing of Hawthorne looks like on both sides.
Yeah, it's exciting. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Barb, did you have a question? You've raised your hand and lowered it a couple of times.
It's it's not a question. It's just a thought that I just keep thinking, oh, well, that's a dumb thought, Barb, shut up. But I'll say it. Um, you know, to me, I'm just thinking about that separation between users. And I just feel like the separation should be between the speed that they're going is really what it is more than necessarily the vehicle. Um, I can imagine that somebody is on a bike, but they're not commuting. They're on a recreational ride and they're gonna stop at the top of the bridge and look at the mountains and that user could be in the exact same space as somebody who's using a wheelchair and little kids and a person with a walker. But it's that person who's, you know, trying to cover some ground and whether they're doing that on a bike, whether they have a scooter, whether they are jogging, you know, that's to me feels like you know, how we're trying to separate people out is this is the space for people. I I was thinking about airports and the walking sidewalks and it's just, you're either going fast or you're going slow. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I like, I didn't even think about people stopping at the top, like, it would be nice to have like little half-moon cutouts where people can get out of the way of people actually trying to use it as a way to get across town. Um so people can lollygag.
Mountains.
There's some sort of benches too, uh for anyone who does get tired along the way.
Cool.
Cool.
Uh, just as far as next steps, I don't know how often COBAC meets, but we are planning to bring this forward for council consideration and direction at their October nineteenth uh council work session, I believe. So if COBAC wanted to kind of submit a letter or anything um indicating any preferences or kind of encapsulating any of this conversation, um that would sort of be the timeline that you would need to do that by.
Okay. Yeah, we meet um on the fourth Thursday of the month, so.
Okay, so there'd be time to kind of have
Yeah.
more discussion if needed.
Yep, absolutely. Cool. Would we send that directly to you or to the city?
You can, uh, well, I guess it's since you advised the city manager's office, you can send it to the city manager. Um, sorry, I'm used to
Yeah.
committees that do report directly to council, but yes, you send it to um city manager and work through Sharissa or Theresa. And you can send it to Garrett and I as well, but you can coordinate with them and they'll get it to us.
Yeah, great.
Excellent. Well, thank you very, very much for the presentation and I I think there's some great feedback here today. Um, and so um, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda since we are uh um uh running up against two-thirty here shortly. Um um, thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is the COBAC strategic plan discussion. Um but we'll go ahead and uh get that started. So we have that, the uh uh, Sharissa put together that strategic plan document uh with some objectives and some background and some next steps of that. And so today we just kind of wanna narrow in our uh next steps for our strategic plan coming up. So uh, and basically narrow down to two to three areas of focus and uh going from there. So any questions before we get started with this discussion?
Okay.
Does everybody have a copy of the strategic plan? Excellent.
Okay. Uh, so uh, we had some brainstorming ideas back in our June meeting, um uh where we came up with some uh over our overarching ideas of, you know, where we're creating a culture of accessibility within the city of Bend. As an organization, we're creating accessible creating an accessible community just in general, and then also improving transportation and infrastructure. Those were kind of the three large themes that that were takeaways from that. Um, and uh basically going into those a little bit further is um talking about our um COBAC's involvement on the overall budget development within the city of Bend as an organization. And then um having someone from the Accessibility Advisory Committee, um or the Affordable Housing Committee uh work with that uh budget development uh in regards to transportation. Uh, the other ideas were for creating an accessible community, which was proactively letting the community know more about uh COBAC. Uh, the the business cards idea of of putting those, handing them out to people, putting them on windshields that are violating um ADA laws, um and then also doing some uh just public outreach and uh community awareness uh with that. So um, in addition to having a booth out at some So, um, in addition to having a booth out at some events or, uh, partnering with some of the other local, uh, um, accessibility, um, groups within the central Oregon and city of Bend as well. And then as far as transportation there, you know, that's a, that's a bigger topic to talk about, you know, similar to what we just had a discussion on about the midtown crossings. Uh, you know, that's, that's more of this larger term, lot longer plan, uh, envisioning that what the city will look like and, and how we can impact, uh, transportation and infrastructure. So those were the, sorry about reading that really too quickly there, but, uh, just wanted to kind of go through that at from a high level, um, and recap kind of what we talked about. And so, uh, today we just want to focus in on that. And so I'll open it up on the floor for anyone who has, uh, further ideas on certain particular topics.
Charisa has her hand raised.
Charisa.
We can't hear you. You're on mute.
Thank you for that. Uh, recognizing that they couldn't be here, Jenny and Amanda actually both passed along some feedback. So if it's okay, I'd like to read through that so that it shows up, um, in the minutes. So first Amanda suggested her preferences would be, um, as far as creating a culture of accessibility, the third option asks the city to provide training. Um, under creating an accessible community, creating a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and then under improving transportation, the final option, partner with Ben, um, N P O regarding the ARPA funds. Jenny, um, her preferences would be, um, under the creating an accessible community, Jenny echoed Amanda's comments about creating a partnership with the chamber. Jenny also added other ideas, uh, under that general topic, um, could include network with other central Oregon advocacy groups. Uh, and then identify opportunities to create more awareness about people experiencing disabilities. And that is the feedback that Jenny and Amanda provided.
Okay. Anybody else, uh, have some feedback?
I just, I have a question.
Sure.
Are we looking to hone in on, because we have these three broad areas. Are we looking at honing in on these kind of smaller bullet ideas and like narrow it down? Is that, is that the goal of, of right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to take out, like to bite off something that we can chew, you know, um, something that's, that's manageable for our, our committee and also realistic.
Okay. I think if I can echo or continue that line of thought, Whitney, the idea is we've got these general areas, but then how are we going to operationalize that over the coming year? So when we talk about creating more accessible community, it's a great idea. What is it that COBAC is going to do to accomplish that? And that is where these more specific bullet points, um, are relevant. Um, hopefully that clarifies.
Yeah. So we can keep these kind of broad topic areas in the strategic plan, but with more specific, like implementation items or action items underneath it. So kind of, okay.
Aaron's raising his hand.
Yeah, I just, I kind of noticed like the general trend of a lot of the, at least the first ones, as far as accessibility seem like sidewalk hazards as far as people parking in spots. My own personal pet peeve is bikers on sidewalks. And I know like around town, there's, you know, like the Deschutes River Trail, there's signs every once in a while that said, like gently says why this is important, stay off this, not just keep out, stay on this. Like there's a little, like a theme that kind of goes along with it. And since Bend is a place where a lot of new people kind of come and go, could there be kind of like an overall theme of the city of like demonstrating why this is important versus, you know, a flyer on your windshield is probably not going to do much preventively, but having some type of visual cues of like, oh, it's important to keep the sidewalk clear for these, this, this, and this reason, you know, please be nice type of thing. Or I don't know if that is overarching or it kind of hits on maybe some of the goals at once.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the idea behind the, uh, the business card idea is that it allows it. The idea would be, we'd be putting it on cars of people who have placards so that if they ever have an issue, they could look at the card and say, it'll say on the card, like if you have issues with sidewalks, if you have issues with this, please call this number. If you have someone parking illegally in a dedicated spot, you call this number.
Oh, I think maybe any of that is put this under somebody's windshield wiper who was parked illegally or who is violating the ADA versus something you could handle. Somehow they could self advocate. I think I misunderstood the, the concept.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be the audience we're reaching because if you're parking in a designated spot, you're already, don't care about much. So.
Well, thinking more like bumpers and trailers taking up almost the whole sidewalk type of thing where it's not necessarily illegal to park there. But like what you did isn't really, you know, violates a secondary rule, I guess. But anyways, I just might kind of sense that it seemed like there's a lot of people who don't understand the sidewalks are, you know, pretty vital to a big portion of the community.
Right.
Ashley's raising her hand.
Um, yeah, on this topic, I feel like we could make, uh, that bullet a little more broad and just like educational informative, um, thing that we develop. I don't think we have to decide right now what that specifically looks like, but investing the time in that kind of communication and education component with, with the community. Um, I definitely would support that. Um, I, and then also, I, you know, I was pretty in alignment with what Amanda, I think, had to say. Um, you know, for creating a, a culture of accessibility, the, you know, training with the engineers and everything. I think that's my top out of all of the things. Um, but you know, and then also working with, um, with the chamber, um, and businesses that kind of goes into more some like education things. Um, those are kind of my, my three things that I'm really interested in.
Barb's raising her hand.
Um, one thing we, the city of Bend has done in the past are, um, public service announcements. And, um, a few years ago, we had a competition in the schools. And that, um, and we, and so, um, I believe we specified the topic. And in that case, um, it had to do with infrastructure maybe. But either way, it was competition, um, at the high schools, I believe. And we, and so it was the kids who had made these videos. And then I don't know how we decided who won, but the video that won, you might've seen it yourself, was the one. And it's kids in white coats and goggles showing how flushable wipes aren't really flushable. And, um, and I just thought it was great, you know, it was, it really had that personal touch because it was made by kids. And then we had this thing that we were able to use because we buy time for um, public service announcements. It's kind of a question of what should we run during that time? So I'm imagining the same idea. It seems to me like kids, you know, these are really the folks who are, who might be riding bikes on sidewalks, who might be riding scooters on sidewalks. And, uh, a, a video that's made by kids for kids, I think, might, you know, actually be effective in changing that behavior. So that is an idea I have. We'll do a video competition and the winning video will be shown as a public service announcement in the middle of the night. And Barb Campbell will see it because she stays up late and watches. So there is an idea.
Whitney's raising her hand.
Wrong button. Um, I just want to like second the, all the, the, and I kind of said this last time we reviewed this, everything on education. And I think that almost it could be a, a category of itself because it, because it takes education for both the public and the decision makers, right? And really specific, and that doesn't matter if it's transportation or if we're talking about educating on the culture of accessibility, but, um, versus coming in saying that the notes would say, don't do this. This is more like, it's a great opportunity for us to hone in on, um, the messaging for different interest groups and who have what they need. So I'm just like very huge supporter in whatever it takes. And yes, everyone loves watching videos with kids. Totally agree, Barbara. Like that's our most powerful social media posts is we just get a kid on there. So whether they're, it's focused on what kids are doing or really like kids actually saying, we care too. Um, I think that they're very motivational, um, uh, tools. So that's my piece on that. Thanks.
The Charisa. So maybe to kind of summarize what I'm hearing, there's a lot of interest around education. The, the, the end user of that education may vary between city staff, um, and then the community in, in general. Um, i- am I understanding what I'm hearing so far correctly? Thank you.
A lot of shaking heads here. Well, two shaking heads, but they're
Yeah.
I don't know if they were, you're able to see them, so.
Them. So maybe to add a little bit of context, recognizing this is the first time that COBAC has created a strategic plan um, and knowing that it is intended to be used as a tool in multiple arenas, one of which is certainly to help council. Uh, as they are putting together their kind of bucket of work, um, for next year. Um, you know, my recommendation would be to keep it small. What are some, some manageable things that COBAC could do this year? And maybe it is education, um, in, you know, that focuses on creating an internal culture of accessibility at the city organization. And it is about creating a culture of accessibility in the community. Um, and it really rolls up kind of into one project that you almost split who the user is going to be. Um, so there isn't a specific path forward. It's really what does COBAC want to do? I can tell you, um, that at the city, there is some significant value to creating the type of educational materials that y'all are talking about to help our staff understand. You can see listening, um, to the presentation we had earlier, everybody wants to do the right thing. So an opportunity to hear from folks who, who's lived experience includes, uh, having a disability would be really meaningful, I think, on both ends. And so in terms of the process, I outlined this a little bit in the email that I sent on Monday. Um, but the idea is we kind of narrow down what we want to work on. Um, I will take that feedback back over the next month, work with Lisa to really start to flesh out what y'all would like to work at. Um, and then come back in September for some more discussion with the hope of having a final draft that y'all could vote on, um, in October. So I don't know if that's helpful in terms of any kind of additional thoughts about preferences or where you think COBAC would like to prioritize the work. But procedurally, that's kind of, uh, where we're at. I also recognize there's just a few minutes left and I don't, this is an important discussion. So if we need to continue this into September before we move, um, I think, you know, that is certainly feedback that, that, that we can take and, and, um, use as well.
Is there a possibility to do any sort of like, um, I don't know, off, um, asynchronous, um, communication about this, um, not during the meetings. I know we have this public records, um, laws that we have to follow, but, um, or public meetings rather. But I was thinking about some, um, way for us internally to maybe provide feedback about the different options and rank them or something like that, like a web form, something along those lines.
So that's a great, uh, uh, idea, Carl. We have used, um, for example, when we developed the charter, we had a small working group to kind of sort through that. But if there is interest in, in ranking, um, these options, uh, I could look into what the logistics of doing that would be. I think the ask from this group then would be, um, that we would be okay moving forward with whatever the ranking is. That would be one option. The other option is we could say, we'll come back at the next meeting, take a look at that ranking and make sure that's what we want to do. Um, but we could certainly look at that. That said, if I send a form out to the whole group, that would be a public meetings. Um, there would be some considerations there because that would be considered serial deliberation if everybody is responding and everybody can see. Alternatively, and what we've done in some other cases is folks would respond to just Lisa and I, and we would rank those, um, and then report out at the next meeting what those preferences were. I see Ashley's raising a thumb.
That seems fine.
Yeah, and given that we're short on time today, uh, do we want to have a separate work session to go to dive into this more? I, I guess, when is our due date for this, Charisa, before we talk about that?
That's a great question. Um, historically, COBAC has not met in, well, I, either November or December, depending because the fourth, uh, Thursday also aligns with holidays. So the goal was to get this done in October. So it was done before the end of the year, meeting Eric's timeline to be able to share it, um, with city council. That said, if the group would like to take a look at potentially meeting in November or December on a different date, I think you've got a little bit more time. Um, it's really important that this is done well and correctly. So if we need to take a look at pushing the timeline out beyond October, absolutely something that we can do.
When Amanda sent in her email, she had, um, actually sent the document and highlighted the three, her three choices.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't know if we want to do that. I have them all sent in and then, you know, put all of the highlighted options on there and then have them vote from those. I mean.
I mean, I think going through this list, there's a lot that can be combined. Um, and so I think that, um, if we, I, I'd love the idea of a working group to figure out what two or three items that we want to focus on. Um, I, I want people to keep in mind that we need specific of ideas that we can, that can be actionable. We can't just say like, oh, let's, you know, let's do this or that. It's like, we have to say like, we're going to like go to three city events a year or something like that. Um, so something, something tangible that we can take action on. But I love the idea of a working group. I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I think a working group would be great too, because then we could start to, to craft that strategic plan as a group too. And, and have a champion who's, who's taking these, uh, scribing these notes for, uh, for us and, and kind of as a group, we're, we're collating. I guess that would be, I, I don't know. I'm sorry. Uh, as far as like the taking of the notes, like, are, is it something, Charisa, that we need to prepare as a group? Or is it, uh, Lisa and yourself are preparing it on our behalf? Like the
The strategic plan?
The final, the final?
The final, yeah.
I see that as something that Lisa and I are developing with your significant input, um, so that we can make sure to be clear on how it aligns with council goals. That said, how we develop it, there's, there's not a specific, um, formula for doing that. If a working group is what, what makes sense, that's, you know, we can take a look at that. Um, if you want to do, you know, what Amanda and, 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 um, Jenny did in sending your preferences, um, and then we combine those and send them out to the group. You know, we could, we could have some virtual electronic conversations over the next month that way.
To the group though, right? Send them to you.
Correct, correct. Your, your feedback would need to go just to Lisa or I. Um, I, I might recommend that as a starting point, Nick, that, that we ask folks to send in their preferences. Maybe over the next week or two, then Lisa and I combine them, send them back out to the group. Um, and, you know, uh, get some feedback, again, only to Lisa and I. Um, from there and we could come back in September and report and, and make a, a, a plan from there. That, that would be my recommendation. But again, um, I want to be thoughtful about what will work best for this group.
And then for our September agenda, do we, is it full at this point? Or can we carve out some more time to, to go through this?
We can carve out some time to go through this. We are anticipating a presentation from Karen Sorsky. Um, y'all will remember giving some feedback about prioritization for pedestrian facilities. Uh, her team will be coming back in September with some updates, but we can certainly carve out some time for this activity as well.
Barb's raising her hand.
I, I just have to make sure before we go today, you guys, to say thank you. Um, that, you know, that, that handrail, Ashley, you know, that's it. This is why we do this. This is why we spend hours and hours of time in these meetings and presentations. Is a comment like that. Is a comment like that never ever might I have ever seen that my own self without somebody who has that lived experience to be able to say, look at this, they're trying to keep kids from jumping over the bridge and they've created this other problem. And I just want you to know that it can seem like such a slog in so much time. But yeah, a single, just a single thing like that is so important. It really is. So to all of you who spend that time, and then to Teresa. I'm just sad that we're losing Teresa, but I want her to know that her presence in our city has made a difference, that she has moved the needle in Bend, Oregon. In right, thank you a lot, Lisa. And I want her to be sure she knows that and knows how much we appreciate her. I don't, you know, I would never want her to look back and then think about, you know, that period of time and I was at Bend and then I moved there. No, you did good work here, Teresa. And we really appreciate you. And if you ever think you want to come back to Bend, Oregon, I will be so happy to know that we have reverse poached you and we got you back, just like we did with Garrett. Did you guys know Garrett, the engineer, he got poached away from us and we poached him right back. So, you know, if we can do that with Teresa, thank you so much for all of your work.
I second that, Teresa. It's completely night and day from the way COBAC used to function. And it's been the best improvement. So thank you so much for your time with us.
The good news is me getting emotional is getting recorded and livestreamed on YouTube.
YouTube says hi.
So maybe just to close out the conversation on strategic plan, definitely it sounds like we need to carve out a fair bit of time. Um, what Lisa and I can do on our end is get those votes um, in so that we can combine them and we'll have some more email conversations. Um, recognizing that we are clearly out of time, I you're not, you're not rid of me yet. So you will still see me um, for a few more months. Um, but I want to recognize Lisa. Lisa is um, really taken on a lot and I appreciate it. So today, for example, making sure the hybrid meeting works. Um, I think is all credit to her. I will come back next month in September with some updates on plans um, to fill the accessibility and equity manager position, but did want to let this group know that those efforts are underway. Um, that I'm having conversations with city leadership. Um, you know, about making sure that the position um, is filled as soon as possible with somebody who is similarly passionate um, about accessibility. I was going to share some comments today about community engagement opportunities for COBAC. Again, in the interest of time, I'll send an email with those updates. Um, but most, you know, most time sensitive is, is welcoming week. Instead of COBAC having a table, we're going to encourage that you attend and represent yourself as members of COBAC and hope that those spur some conversations, John, to exactly what you're talking about. What is COBAC? What do y'all do? Um, and, and, and start to have some conversations about accessibility from that. I'm also going to send some information. Um, city staff is looking for feedback about unsanctioned camping code. It's coming to council. Uh, the accessibility lens is certainly important in that, as you know, disability exists in all, um, among all members of our community. And so making sure that folks who experience homelessness um, are also can, with who have disabilities um, are also considered. And then if you do have questions for me um, about the transition and how we'll make sure that Lisa has the support that she needs and the equity team in general over the next couple of months, feel free to give me a call, send me an email. Um, I'm happy to connect with all of you. Um, and talk through that. And thank you um, for the kind words. I, I said this in the message I sent, but leaving the city of Bend is not an easy decision um, for me. Um, particularly because I've enjoyed working with all of you so much. I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, that things have improved and certainly for my part, I will do what I can um, to make sure that this work continues because it is so important. Oh, one last thing I do want to share. It's very exciting as of today. We now have captioning at all of our meetings provided by a live captioner. So folks watching me getting emotional on YouTube will be able to see high quality captions because again, we want to make sure these meetings are accessible for everybody. So with that, um, that's all the comments that I have. Thanks, folks.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Um, uh, do you guys want to skip over our COBAC roundtable portion today? Are you guys okay with doing, skipping that portion? Okay, perfect. Um, then uh, we'll give it, uh, we'll go it over to council member Barb Campbell to give a quick update as well.
Um, I think I have said everything that I have to. Um, I am the chair of the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization. So I would be happy to talk to you more about the ARPA funds that are available through the MPO and how we think that you all can provide feedback for us on how to spend that money. And um, yeah, I think that's what I know. Thanks, everybody.
I did want to add a couple of things, just so you know, we um, we do have a wheelchair access. We put, um, I asked for a ramp from facilities um, for our meetings. So um, there's access to the DIAS. And also we have a new listening um, uh, assist lis, listening device. And it sounds so good. So just wanted to let you know of a couple more accessible things that we have. We're working on it.
Okay.
So. Awesome. I'm going to be in person next month, so everyone should be in person because it's very.
And I, and I bring snacks.
I was going to say we could bring a whole bunch of sweet snacks in honor of, in memory of Karen. Well, we could think about Karen as we eat cupcakes that have an entire inch of frosting on the top.
Excellent. Okay. Well, if, if there's nothing else today, uh, I'd like to go ahead and uh, adjourn our COBAC meeting for this Thursday, August 25th, 2022 at 2:41 PM.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, thanks.
Next time.
Bye.
Bye, thanks.